Just give us some technical difficulties.
Commissioner Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Day.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Robertson. Commissioner Speaker.
Yeah.
Commissioner Terry. Thank you. Got some here. Got them. So what's the question on June 16th?
My question, second page bottom of the paragraph, as I did not at 10:00. I had a moment. It says that they were thinking about doing a work session on the evening of June 30th. Did you do that?
Nope.
Okay, so maybe in the minutes or somewhere we can note that that was not a date that was set.
Yeah, that would be, yeah. And that was said too.
And then I thought, uh-oh, it's July 7th.
Did I miss something and not notice that? I'll just put it was determined not to hold a special meeting.
No perjuries, no proclamations, we'll move on to the board and commission report. And then let's start with Commissioner.
Development met. Goodness, I whatever day it was that I've. In probably the minutes. And it was their annual meeting, pretty short and sweet, it was a roundup, and then there was the awards ceremony after that, so we approved the budget.
The airport bird met last Wednesday and the door for the big hangar has been removed. The ripping hanger has a number of leaks. Roof is leaking, around the skylights are leaking, and the bi-fold doors are leaking out. And the manager is going to get some estimates at some point to be done. The DNRC building is moving there and putting a pre-back building up. But we have to make sure and suspend that move to the manager. The minimum airport standards. The board approved in addition to value building because it is on leased property. Peggy Butler came to the airport board looking for land to build an animal shelter on. We had a couple of places, but it just, we just have to really look at that. The Fish and Wildlife and parks would like to extend their lease. It ends in this month. And we are going to request that they do some of the projects they said they will do. That's it.
Did Peggy Butler ever approach about the MOU for the animal shelter?
Yes, yep. And so we found that, calculated that, and are working with Peggy and that group to get a meeting set up with the police department and myself.
And they're just still actively looking for property?
I think they're looking for their own facility, but in the short term, they'd like to work something out for us or with us.
Nothing to report?
The library met on Tuesday, June 10th, and if I wasn't here, I will report on it now. That's okay. I just wanted to let everybody know that the summer reading program is amazing and wonderful. They are doing great work there, both for kids programming as well as adult programming. A couple of examples, they had a three writers' night or a three writers' night with three writers. Or writers' night at the Carnegie, one or the other, they could say. Couldn't catch that. But that was an adult program that's very well attended, the upstairs part of the library. And then a program that the youth has been, was able to put on was a quilting program. So it was very fun, the theme is coloring the world, so that quilting was fun to see all the different quilt patterns coming in and the different colors there. There are over 400 participants in the summer reading program this year, both the youth and the adult combined, and so they're doing very well. And just at the Scholastic Book Fair, they had over 100 kids attend, so that's been really great. The library also purchased a local history scanner or something we'll use specifically for local history. And that's a way that we can capture historical photos primarily, digitize them in their negative format, because that's how we have them on crystal plates, and be able to modify and digitize them with a little better quality than what we have right now. We had an intern from Stanford start June 23rd. The next meeting will be Wednesday, July 16th at 1:00 PM in the library.
Commissioner Robertson?
If I may add to Commissioner Hewitt's report on the airport, do you mind if I add a little color to that? As you mentioned, the hangar door replacement project was approved, and it was recommended approval by the engineers. By the engineers, that's a big project, it's a million dollar project to replace the big door for the hangar, which is a huge upgrade to that hangar.
But we're going to make the door big?
Yeah, it's, it's the entire front of the hangar will be more instead of about half to two-thirds of it.
Right.
So significantly larger allows for much larger aircraft, easier access, get it on the hangar. That's 2026. Also, at the beginning of the meeting, there was a bid opening for the 2026 taxiway project group of projects. And that was a big deal, it was, engineers estimated it at $6.5 million for the improvements to the taxiways. The, it was only one bidder, it was our local contractor, Century, and they were at 6.8, so they were within within the, probably, the likely award allowance threshold, so it looks like that might happen, which is a significant improvement. And probably the last really huge improvement to the airport for some time, if it's approved.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
The park and park board will be meeting this week. Yes, we had last month off with the, with the re-opening of the Civic Center. And then we took the fourth of July off, so we'll be back and at it. And then I wanted to share from Commissioner Terry, the report from the Central Montana Foundation. This is the report from June 24th. The Central Montana Foundation will be having an audit performed in 2026 now, with the foundation has reached $73 million. That was pretty cool. Scholarship granted this year was 250,000 through CMF. The CMF directors approved a request of $2,653.80 for Central Montana Childcare Alliance for technology needs, computers and portable printers especially. And there will not be a meeting in July, and the next meeting will be August 26th. That is on the Central Montana Foundation. He will now turn the time over to City Manager for the report.
Yep, so Robert Pesson Associates has prepared the fireworks report that was sent to the EQ. There was some confusion and a typo in Chris's last name that made him unaware that that was emailed to him. But they have since seen it, and I forwarded that to him today, so he has his own copy of it. You should have that included in your packet, but it outlines what's been done this last half a year and kind of where we're at in the timetable to getting back to compliance. The power outage that occurred June 15th, I think left everybody in a panic. You know, all of the streetlights were out and it just happened very quickly, and then it was over with. And so I know several of our buildings were wondering if they should stay open or where they were at in the day. At the Wistwood, I thought there were a handful of electronic components that were damaged because of being shut off and then brought back on and still being in the on function. Most of those components have now been either replaced or repaired. And then the next week, there was that storm that came through on July 2nd. We did have trees down in a lot of our parks, but not a huge amount of damage in town. The biggest area that saw the most damage was north of Lewestown, where the storage building that was once at Burglumberg was blown across the street and disintegrated. And so Public Works is now working on getting the items that were stored in there in a different location and cleaning up. So Civic Center is gearing up for kind of their last summer programming, which is play football. Also, the pool is a very busy place on these hot days. And they're gearing up for the swim lesson sessions and working on pool parties and private lessons. And then just kind of the heat of the summer activities. We'll have the fair parade, the Fourth of July activities just wrapped up. I did ask the fire department for kind of a debriefing on kind of fire calls or, you know, how does this compare to when we did not allow fireworks in town? And by and large, both fire and police feel that the ordinance change has worked well. Large number of complaints and calls anymore. Jimmy reported that there was three fires that were caused by fireworks in town. And most of those were related to improper disposal of fireworks. So garbage, cams, pot on fire, vehicles, those sort of things. So a great reminder that just because they're pulled up touch doesn't mean that you can't admit. And then gearing up for the fair parade, center fest, and hot summer nights. I always kind of believe that that time is upon us. Thank you.
All right, moving on to public comment, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? So, can you tell us your name?
I'm Harley Grounds, I'll speak up, I'm hard of hearing. And I'm here to inquire about the mountain man and the building that's adjacent to the veterans' park, I'm commander of the veterans' park. Would like to find out what the status of that is, if it's just going to be remodeled after rumors that it's going to be demolished? Does anybody is there for next lead or anything else on?
I know that we, as the city, have met with the owners, and they plan on remodeling it and continuing it in kind of a new and exciting way. So I haven't heard the demolition or anything, and I don't believe that to be the case, but
It's just a rumor.
We don't have any permits or anything on anything.
Okay, well, thank you very much, you're doing well, anything happening there, veterans' park?
Yeah.
Okay, I have one other question. And the 300 complex or whatever it is that's being built to south of the S.
Oh, terrace.
Could you speak up, please? About the terrace. Is there any type of retention pond, runoff pond, is there, is that designed in?
Yes, they have an onsite storm retention area designed in that.
Okay, so there is the long flood high street.
Correct, yes, all of the water off of their property has to remain on their property.
Okay, that, that would lead down to the veterans' park also, I was just curious about that. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question for you real fast, Harley. Are you the one we need to get ahold of if we have questions or things like that on the veterans' park?
Yes, you can contact me or Steve Matisse.
Perfect, that question comes up from time to time, and I didn't know who to refer people to.
Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
Tom Matrani, Madam City Manager and Councilman. We just got done with the Fourth of July parade. I'm a shrine clown in, I remember years ago, I helped instigate an ordinance where parade goers would not throw candy. Candy would be handed from hand to hand rather than thrown out of the window of a fire truck and everything else. I know that we, that ordinance did pass. Yeah, I can't tell you what year it was years ago, but there was never any legal bite to it. And I think maybe the city attorney should look into the risks that are involved with that as far as, as the city goes. And I would reiterate that maybe the city do a little thinking about that and maybe put some bites, it doesn't, I don't know what the penalty is, I don't think it's anything, and I know that it is not enforced. Because I got to talking in this, this was the 44th, Fourth of July parade that I've clowned in. And I've never seen in, I've always seen candy being thrown except by us. And just to spur you on, I was going down the street in a little chamber about that high, ran out in, I see that he was keeping on going, and I was over there within about a foot within, so he was, he was going into the traffic of the parade, and I just about had him, his mom swooped in and took him. So I, we've got 25 shrine hospitals, but I don't want to see any little kid have to go to a damn hospital because they were run over in Lewestown's parade. And I think you guys should enforce not throwing candy. I say that, I say that as a father, as a grandfather, as an uncle, is, think about that.
I actually wanted to bring that up tonight in Commissioner Minute, because I was standing behind a gentleman who got hit in the head with a dumb-dumb sucker. And I mean, they had a mark on his forehead, and I felt so bad for him, I was like, oh my goodness, are you all right? But it was a kid that just chopped it right off the top of a flat bed, and he was just, and he was like he was playing baseball. So I wanted to bring that up tonight to see, because I know that it's been talked during the past, but not ever since I'm here.
And I know that, you know, we require special event insurance. We provide ordinances such as, you know, our dog ordinances to those events that have food, parade ordinances that include no throwing candy and things like that are given as part of the event process. I know the Chamber does a pretty good job at educating their folks and people participating in the parade. They have them sign labors and things like that this year, so I think we can work on educating. I don't believe that there probably is a penalty to that, to that ordinance, but I have to double check.
Maybe, maybe there should be.
The Chamber is the one that hosts that.
Is the event organizer.
Exactly, but the Lewestown Days Parade has a different organizer, or is it Chamber as well?
Pretty much, each of the individual parades are hosted by somebody else. So the fairgrounds, the fairs.
The next one.
They're hosted by the county. You know, hot summer nights, those sort of activities, we have event insurance and things like that as well.
I wanted to bring that up, you, so thank you for coming before the commission.
Well, perhaps you better put a memo out to the fire department, because all of the fire trucks were throwing candy. Tell Jimmy that, I, I've seen that personally. I don't get to see much of the parade, because I'm talking with the kids to the people, and my back is to the parade. But every now and then, I get hit in the head by candy, and I look around, and it's the fire department chucking candy out, so not to, but they represent the city, so that is part of your responsibility, so. Anyway, maybe put some bite into that, so, I don't like, I just, I hate to see a little kid get hurt, and it's going to happen. If something isn't done about it, so, thank you for the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Yeah, a bit back on the train, during the home Florida, yeah, I thought the same thing. It had a little bit more uncontrolled than it has in the past. I mean, most people would have liked, but the worst I've drawn, I did Florida.
Hi, I'm Jamie Opus, and I'm a volunteer.
Nice and loud, please.
I'm Jamie Opus, and I'm a volunteer with Saving Animals for the East Asia, so I work with Maggie Bella. I just wanted to expand on a couple of things that happened in the last week and a half for me that kind of are examples of why an animal shelter is so critical right now. 10 days ago, I responded to a call from someone that needed an animal removed from their property. I went, and there was a mama dog and her 12 puppies. All of them were starving and dehydrated and living in horrific conditions inside the house, where there were children as well, but I was there for the animals, and I managed to get them. Mama dog couldn't produce milk anymore to feed her puppies because she was so dehydrated. She ate two huge bowls of food and drank three bowls of water before she finally collapsed. And the puppies were severely malnourished. They are all doing okay now. But it's instances like that where if I were to call law enforcement, whether it's the city or the county, and say, this is a really bad situation. We need law enforcement to step in, this is clearly a case of neglect, and if something needs to be done. They could respond, but they can't remove the animals from that situation because they have nowhere to move them. So they may cite the owner. You're going to take it, which a lot of people that do these kinds of things have, when people take it, they don't pay them, and nothing happens. So the animals stay in those circumstances unless somebody like me volunteers their time and their money to go and handle the situation. There are, in this particular case, there are still at least six other dogs down in that same scenario, that same situation, which is in the county, but only just barely. So these animals are running loose in the city, but the people live in the county. And both city and county officers know who these people are, they are familiar with these dogs, and they've been called to this place multiple times, and those dogs are still there. They are kept in abysmal conditions. They have no protection from the elements, so they are out in the sweltering sun in little tiny cages. The mama dog is a medium-sized dog that I rescued with her 12 puppies, was in a cage that was about two feet wide by four feet long by about eight and high off the table. So they were in very cramped conditions. And those other dogs that are still down there are being abused and neglected, and they're being bred as well to contribute to the already horrible problem that we have. This is just one example of many in this community. The other issue that I think that's important, and this happened tonight, I actually just noticed that I still have blood on my shoe from earlier. I took mama dog for a walk just to get her out and about and away from her puppies. And she was on a leash, and we were walking, and there was a dog at large, and it attacked her. I can't walk any of my dogs without that petting. Every single time I try to take my dogs for a walk, I get, either I have to pick up my dogs, because I have three small dogs, so I can pick them up and shield them with my body, or we chase the dog off that's trying to attack our dogs. I've actually been attacked myself, and these are dogs that are just running loose. We called the city, and, and nothing happens. Officers either can't find them, but you on Facebook, and everybody knows whose dog it is. You go to the lost and found on Facebook, and everyone knows whose dog it is. And then they call down, and then that's the end of it. There's, there's no record patch which for this. And even if, like I said earlier, officers responded, what are they going to do? They don't have anywhere to put that dog. If they pick up a dog that's vicious and they need to hold it, I was told that the pound is no longer the pound. In fact, I just found this out last week, that the pound is no longer a pound, and that it's not being used for that. And the only time they're going to use it, this was told me by a city officer, that the only time they're going to use it is if someone's in a car wreck or incarcerated, and they have an animal with them, and then the animal's removed and held there until they can find somebody to come get it. So they're not using the pound as a pound anymore. I don't know what happened to the pet assistance fee or the money that was funding that facility, but that's apparently gone. And right now, every person that I know of that volunteers for the two separate organizations that I also volunteer for is saturated with dogs and pets. Right now, at my house, I have a mama dog, her 12 puppies, and three of my own dogs. That is, you want to talk about chaos? That's chaos. So it's, I think a lot of people don't realize how bad the situation is because they don't see it. But if anybody wanted to volunteer, I guarantee you, if you called Peggy or you called sales sold his time and said, I would like to volunteer my time and take in an animal, you would, within days, be inundated with, we have another dog, you have a, we have another cat, you have a. There are so many out there, but people don't see it, because we can operate behind the scenes, and we're invisible. These dogs are in our homes, they're in our backyards, and people don't see it. That's why people don't think there's a problem. But if we stopped doing what we were doing, it would be a nightmare for this entire community. I would let people that allow their dogs to run at large, be cited, or at least a firm talking to, you know, because I'm, I would like to be able to take that mama dog or my three little dogs out for a walk without getting attacked. And I'm certain that the man who owned that dog, nothing happened. I, I'm going to go to the police department after this and talk to them and find out what happened, because I would let it be situated on that call. I'm guessing at the very most, he got a ticket. But that fence that holds, they have a fenced yard, but the dog went through the fence, he just pushed through a loose panel, and now he came. Thank God for the people at Central Electric, because that's where they called me over, and because that dog kept coming back and coming back and coming back, trying to attack my dog. And they hid me and my dog in their building, and then we waited for law enforcement to show up so that they could capture the dog so that I could walk my dog home, because he wouldn't leave, and I couldn't leave the building with my dog. So we sat inside the building for about 20 minutes waiting for law enforcement to get there so that I could walk home with my dog. It's, it's a bad situation, and I want everyone to know that, because you guys don't see it unless you're a part of it.
Thank you so much. What is this, is that current on the pound, what is the status right now?
We have been utilizing that, so I'll follow up with the police department and see, you know, what the status is and the use of it. It regularly is used for dogs at large in town and stuff like that, and we have And we have to enforce it to go down there and take care of them and things like that. So that's news to me. And then, uh, we do have a couple of ordinance changes. Both Dog at Large and Vicious Dog ordinance changes that hopefully have some teeth to them as well. That, uh, we're working with law enforcement and our attorney to make some revisions.
Is it, is it just dogs at large or is it dogs and cats at large?
You can still get a cat at large.
You can.
I got one.
You got one?
Yeah, I have had a cat at large. It was right after I had a, I, I got to get it for a dog too. I'd escaped, I went temporary, so I've been on the side of the punishment, but I'm sure it doesn't happen like it needs to, but I definitely felt it, so.
Thank you so much for bringing that before us. For all of the comments tonight with um, public comment, thank you. We are going to move on to our consent agenda and turn it over to the commissioners to ask questions regarding that.
I know somewhere in here we did buy dog food from Fleet, so we must be meeting.
Any other questions regarding the consent agenda?
I move we approve the claims that have been paid from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five for a total of five hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bueller and a second from Commissioner Roots of all in favor. All right, consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to our regular agenda. Item number one is a public hearing to hear comments on a conditional use permit application from First Christian Church to operate a church and other place of worship, including parish houses and a Sunday school building in a residential R-one district. So we'll open that public comment, uh, public hearing and turn that over to City Manager.
Yep, um, so the city received a request for a conditional use from the First Christian Church. Um, they purchased the house, um, basically next to them on Eleventh Avenue South. Um, so it's down kind of over, we're coming close to the edge of the hill on Eleventh Avenue. Um, their plan is to utilize that existing structure as a junior high, uh, Wednesday school or Sunday school type building. And, uh, so they have, uh, already been providing services to these group in their existing facility and, uh, would like to utilize their own space for those, um, kind of junior high age kids. Uh, they feel that they would serve approximately twenty-five kids. Again, they have been servicing them uh, in their other building, so they're familiar with drop-off in the existing parking lots and things like that. And, uh, so forty-two letters were sent out, uh, back in June and to date, we have not received any comments on that proposal. Um, at the, uh, city-county planning board meeting, uh, they did go ahead and recommend approval of this conditional use permit. Um, you can see what their conditions were, um, and that's an inspection by police or sorry, fire and building codes, um, and that all safety improvements need to be done prior to occupying this space. And that the existing parking lot be used for off-street parking for the facility.
A parking lot in the off-street.
Of the existing parking lot be used for this as a house as well.
Which, um, just to add, on Twelfth Avenue South, that location, they're actually our neighbors and there's already quite a bit of activity there, the church and it would be really nice for them to have that house, have their space. I didn't realize that when we just sent, I don't know, we made your life, right, edge of the.
Well, it could, like, Twelfth Avenue South, or the, out down, down Main or what?
No, the house is on Twelfth Avenue South.
Uh, I know the one, okay, I saw it.
Um, since this is a conditional use permit, would it go, if it was ever sold, would it stay? It doesn't change. If, you know, a different church or something were to take over, that would roll, but it would not be like a by cell or.
Any other questions regarding the conditional use permit? Okay, our public hearing is closed. We'll move on to item number two, discussion and action on approving the conditional use permit application from First Christian Church to operate a church and other place of worship, including a parish house, um, and Sunday school building in residential R-one district. City Manager Holly Phillips.
Yes, again, we received the conditional use permit. Um, this action was approved by the city county planning board with a couple of conditions. Um, and we've not received any neighbor or comments on this proposal.
I move we approve the conditional use permit application with the conditions cited.
One second. We have a motion from Commissioner Spica and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Has the church already purchased this building?
Yes, they own it.
If I'm correct, they've been, like, just resident, they've been using it, they're rental for people that.
Parsonage.
In the past, that's what it was. Yeah.
Any other questions from the commission or the public? All right, we'll take a roll call then.
We are approving the conditional use permit application for First Christian Church. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Roots.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Spica.
Aye.
Item number three, discussion and action on approving the railroad lease for Lewis Town Livestock Incorporated located in that area of Highway one ninety-one. City Manager Holly Phillips.
So included in your package is, uh, our lease of forever of property as well as an exhibit and online tax show is with us too. Um, and so if he has questions or would like to say something, um, if we could just give him a minute, um, that would be great. Otherwise, um, you can see their request is to lease a portion of the trail adjacent to the livestock, um, area. This traditionally had been used for loading cattle onto the trains. Kyle's proposal is to utilize that space to load cattle on semis. And so, um, what's in front of you is basically a five-year lease, uh, where we locked in the price and then beginning year six would have the incremental increases. Um, and this is basically the same agreement that we've utilized in our other, um, first. Kyle, do you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, good evening. I do not, should be pretty self-explanatory. Thanks for explaining that, Holly.
So, um, how often, like, have we done other, other areas, quarters to do that, or you have right now, like, how often are, any others?
Oh, we have several. I think I have six of them right now actively leased is, um, again, this is for exclusive use. And so, uh, many of them are on surplus property, um, you know, think Mountain acre, no, Mountain.
Inner Mountain.
Inner Mountain. Um, Lewis Town propane, Central Montana propane, Honda.
Mountain.
Um, Mountain Meadows and they have the lease part and they have the van building. I have some people that lease the metal building down there. That's all I can think about.
Commissioner Robertson?
Uh, first, I'd like to state, I'm in favor of this lease. However, I also wanna make sure that we don't ever negate the possibility of more improved trail system up toward Linekill where a lot of people use trails. And so I would hope that, um, Mr. Phillips would agree that if we ever had to reroute the trail around there or Stewart, we could work with them to do something like that without pulling out the lease altogether.
And so, um, it does have an option to automatically renew. Um, there is a six-month window if, uh, either party decides to vacate that lease.
Yeah, and I have, I'm not trying to suggest we vacate the lease as much as work to find a solution for that trail so it can continue beyond that property, if it, if it ever comes to.
And so right now, um, the last section that we have kind of to the north is this section there. Stops, uh, just about to Linekill Road, um, you know, kind of coming in at an angle and ties back into one ninety-one. Um, and with this proposal, uh, we would propose basically dead-ending it at the parking lot at the livestock yard. Um, with some signage that said, you know, this is the end of the Lewis Town trail system. Uh, you can turn around or utilize the sidewalks along the one ninety-one to return to town or something like that, so. And they have, um, brought this up to the front of the trails as well.
And what was their response?
Uh, they have, their meeting's not till tomorrow, so they have not responded.
Because that was my question as well, like, how does this affect the trail system?
Um, as far as the functionality of it now, um, I don't think that, and Kyle could speak to this too, if he sees a lot of people utilizing that section or not. I personally have not seen a bunch of that of use at that section. Most people are turning around pretty much at his parking lot. Um.
I, I think, having written that, as far as the parking lot, as I recall, it's not been regravelled and improved beyond this. And so it becomes a much less interesting trail at that point. But it, as I recall, there's room kind of between the trail and the highway which you could potentially be allowed around. Is that correct?
So I believe Kyle has some additional property on the other side of the railroad property, between that and the highway, if I'm not mistaken. So that's not like in the stage right away. I think he has a little slot where often he'd be hard to sale or things like that. He can speak to that, so.
Yeah, we do, we do own property between the railroad frontage and the highway right away. Um, and yeah, Tim, that, uh, you know, and I appreciate the, the questions. Um, something that I've thought about over the last five years since we've owned that, uh, business is, you know, if the, indeed the trail was going to go out further, yeah, maybe we could look at a, um, work on something out that, that would maybe put them along the highway for a, a short time until they get beyond, um, our facility. I, it's not a real aesthetic, uh, portion of the, of the trail there anyways. Um, and like, like it's been mentioned, it's not improved, it's not gravelled, it's not, I mean, it's just the railroad bed is all that it is. And so, um, um, and the fact that it ends, you know, just a, just a, you know, less than a mile or so down, down the trail anyways. Um, I guess with, in discussions with Holly, it kind of made sense that it would terminate there. But I certainly understand what you're, what you're saying and I'd be open to having a discussion about, you know, uh, use like, utilizing some of our personal or our, our private deeded property there, um, to, uh, to route that scale, that, that trail. It's, like I said, it's not a real aesthetic, um, area. There's a, there's an old railroad building there that we don't own. It's very, uh, uh, it's just a, it's a building that's held by a holdings company that, that I'm sure assumed, uh, uh, a big portfolio of Burlington Northern or something properties. And, and I've never been able to reach the owners of that. I've, I've attempted to, uh, because the building's in pretty severe disrepair and it's, it's starting to become a hazard for us and our, our crew and our cattle. Um, but anyway, that, that's there along the trail, uh, along the railroad bed as it is now and, and, um, anyway, I, I guess to answer your question, you know, kind of subjectively, because it's, there's no plans in place to, from what I understand, to move that trail further north. Uh, but I would certainly be open to working alongside the city to come up with a solution. That may not, I mean, my first preference might not be to put it right on the railroad bed where it was, but I'd certainly be open to using some of our, our deeded property or something to, to work around that. And, and also, um, there's been very, very little traffic. Uh, I can't say there's zero, but very, very little traffic beyond, uh, where the trail kind of terminates now as it is. As you pull into our, our parking lot, there's two or three of those, um, posts in the ground that are to prevent vehicles from driving down that trail. And, uh, it's kind of a natural termination really already. As it goes into our parking lot, kind of a, the greater area there is just, there's not really a, you know, you can't really see it, even the railroad bed where it was in some, some cases there, so. Um, just some thoughts.
And I appreciate it and I, like I said, I support this, uh, this lease. Um, I remind, or just point out to city commissioners, when I moved here twenty-some years ago, there was a meeting up at the airport about putting the trail along the edge of the airport and my good former friend passed away. Frank Bass said, nobody will ever use this damn trail. And, uh, it gets used arguably thousands and thousands of times every year. Um, now that it's been approved, but it took improvement to make it a viable trail. And you wouldn't think it would be a big deal, but it's a huge deal for people to walk up there. So I just wanna make sure that we don't forever shut off potential of a trail toward Linekill, because I know a lot of people do bike up that direction also and so they, and I think they don't use the trail because it's not approved or anything. As, as a biker, I can tell you, I turn around right there because it's, it's really rough, so.
Is, is there established sidewalk out there? Past the livestock? You don't know, right?
There's sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, all the way to the Fairgrounds Marquee, the main entrance to the Trade Center. There's sidewalk there that was, that was put in, I believe, when, uh, when the sewage system or, you know, kind of around that same time when that was done.
I move the Lewis Town, the commission approve a railroad lease for Lewis Town Livestock Incorporated located in the area of Highway one ninety-one.
Awesome. We have a motion from Commissioner Roots and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other questions from the commission or comments from the public?
I heard, uh, of the, the, the area of the city limits of, of the con.
City.
Oh, can I? Well, I, okay, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Roots.
So this, uh, this lease is, it's a five-year lease, but with six months' notice, amendments could be made?
Um, it could be terminated with six months' notice by either party, um, but it was automatically renewed too. They would have the option to, to renew.
Okay.
Is there a way to build into this document a, an amendment or a discussion about the trail usage if in the future that is something the trails group would like to see?
Um, I think with six months' notice, it could be opened up.
I was gonna say, do, do we need that specific verbiage in there that that could be a reason why that would open up? And. We need everything.
Well, it's just wide open. Either open it up or people don't open it up. City commissioner says, don't renew it and then they open it up.
Okay. And since.
Or cancel it.
Yeah. If this gets approved tonight, is there a way that we can communicate that there is an opening to this agreement to the trails group?
It's already been communicated and they have their meeting tomorrow and so, um, I visited with their chair and asked them to discuss it at the meeting. Okay. Um, and just as a reminder, all of the trails rentals are what fund our trails coordinator position and improvements on the trail system. So these ones go directly back to the trail, to the trails.
Right, ready to share. Okay, any other comments, questions from the public or the commission? Any other comments? Mr. Phillips?
Um, sorry, I'm on mute. Uh, no, I'm, I think I'm, I think I'm good here. Thanks for your consideration.
All right, would you roll?
Uh, we are approving a railroad lease for Lewis Town Livestock Incorporated. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Roots.
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson.
Aye.
Commissioner Spica.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four, discussion.
Okay, item number four, discussion and action on petition for annexation from HAPS Properties LLC to annex Canyon T Properties subdivision number two, lot six, less tract six. Is that people?
Yep.
COS number eight-two-three, south sixteen, or S sixteen, T fifteen, north R eighteen east to the city of Lewis Town. City manager Holly Phelps.
Um, so handing out tonight is the petition for annexation of the HAPS property. Uh, this is off of H Street where.
Off of where?
H Street.
H Street.
Uh, so this is where the new gym, the lion's den, um, and Vanessa's clinic, which I believe is Lewis Town Physical Therapy is located. Um, this property, uh, as it was developed, had city services extended to it and it was always anticipated that this would be annexed into the city. Um, they're still working on their subdivision, so this would be an annexation of that whole large original lot.
Do you have any questions or do we have a motion?
I move to approve the petition for annexation, uh, described in the agenda.
Oh, well said.
And anything else you need to put in there?
Well, then we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Robertson. Any other questions from the commission?
So just to confirm, this is a lot that is being, just the lot is being annexed into the city or the entire subdivision?
Uh, this is the entire original lot.
Okay.
So it will encompass the four lots that are in the process of being created.
Okay.
So is this a standard sized lot, like ninety by a hundred or what?
No, these are giant.
Giant, oh. I wish we had a map of this.
Can I go up to the data?
Right behind benchmark?
Yes, that's one between, I think.
I, I believe it was about five acres originally. All big piece. I think they were all five acre lot. I usually like to go look at things like this, but they were the whole physical address.
I just got it and went to holiday, it was a little bit later than mine. Any other questions from the commission or the public?
Is, that's what, is, uh, do they want to be annexed?
Yes, yes, definitely. That's what their petition says.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay. We are approving a petition for annexation. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number five is the discussion and action on approving resolution four-one-nine-three, a resolution providing for the annexation by petition of property belonging to HAPS Properties LLC. City manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so this is the annexation of that same property. Uh, in this resolution, you'll see that, uh, in accordance with the subdivision, uh, the zoning for this property will, uh, be general commercial, which is a C-one designation. And so that's consistent with, uh, what was anticipated through the zoning process and all of the public hearings that they had there for.
Moving to approve resolution number four-one-nine-three. Second?
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker with a second from Commissioner Bueller for the approval of four-one-nine-three. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Or the public? Yeah, we have a roll call vote.
Okay, we are approving resolution number four-one-nine-three. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt? Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, it's discussion and action on approving an emergency services dispatch agreement between the city of Lewis Town and Judas Basin County. City manager Holly Phelps.
Um, so this is our standard, uh, nine-one-one contracts. Um, they are all in the process of being renewed. Uh, and some of the changes this year include, um, payment. And so you'll see where, um, the nine-one-one board establishes an amount that is, uh, due each year. Um, this is the first of three emergency service contracts that you'll see. Uh, but again, we're continuing to provide nine-one-one services to these adjacent counties.
How was, I was gonna ask, how that was received? Was that?
There was, uh, no concerns or comments. Um, just a little note, Judas Basin is a little unique. They do have a dispatcher that's located in Sanford, and so they operate, um, kind of a office admin type services, uh, Monday through Friday, eight to five. And so, um, that's unique to the other counties.
Why do we not have? I was gonna say, I can't find you that.
Um, because it's agreed upon and it changes feature?
Does it say where that comes from?
I don't see, like, they would provide, Judas Basin would provide money, right? They provide their state funding in addition to an amount that is set by the nine-one-one.
So would that be in section two, under what Judas Basin?
Well, it's, it's page three, payment in turn. A is correct. We have been doing that for quite some time. B is the one that I am questioning, is that there's no amount that we just did an amount and it's based on something. So that's the only one that I would question. Otherwise, everything's dependent on the state. Okay. And so that amount is approved annually by the board, um, and it's based on the volume and a, a little math equation. And so those are established through that whole process. But that is words, reference.
So there's no flat fee?
No. And then today I received the one from Furthest County, so we'll be, uh, have one of them.
Do you have a motion or do you have a question? The emergency services dispatch agreement between Judas Basin County and the city of Lewis Town. Does that motion need to be made with a specification for the amount?
No, no.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hewitt with a second from Commissioner Roots. Any other questions or discussion on the dispatch agreement? Any comments from the public?
Yeah, what about the Furlieum County?
Uh, the Furlieum County is the third county that we'll still have to do, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Good one, on that statement, curious.
Any other questions or comments from the commission or the public? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, we're approving an emergency service agre- dispatch agreement between civil Lewis Town Judas Basin County. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Item seven, discussion and action on approving the twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-seven fire department bargaining agreement. City manager Holly Phelps.
Um, so included in your packet was a draft contract with the fire bargaining unit. Again, this is a three-year agreement, like all of ours. Um, there wasn't substantial changes, um, in the verbiage of this. Uh, the city did ask for a couple of things, um, such as a cap on training comp and things like that. Uh, be added to this agreement. Um, the union and I worked out a wage agreement. Um, they traditionally like a set dollar amount, uh, rather than percentages. And so the last page has those amounts. Uh, we are proposing a two-fifty increase across the board for year one, uh, followed by two dollars for the subsequent years, um, of the agreement. And that is, uh, consistent with what similar sized agencies across the state are paying their staff. Um, I will say that we're one of the only communities that utilizes a full paid department and then a mix of depart paid as well. And so it is difficult to, um, compare apples to apples in, uh, fire department. And then the other, uh, change to that is two dollars and fifty cents for the call duty pay. And that is for, kind of, we're not fully staffed at the station. Uh, so kind of the overnight hours that somebody's on call in case they have, uh, back-to-back medicals and out-of-town health, things like that.
Two, so two fifty, but is it two twenty-five?
It's two twenty-five.
It's gonna be a hard attack over here.
And that's consistent with, um, the general unit, which also has call duty included in it.
I think I'm just reading this around longevity. A half a percent per month, per year of service, so is that a six percent bump per year of service?
No, um, it's based on their monthly salary, right?
Based on their annual salary. Uh, I'm reading that now. I take it by the annual amount and then it's per year of service. Like ten years would be a five percent bump, but not a monthly base pay amount of service. So it's, it would be the twenty-seven thirteen times twenty-eighty times five percent, or point.
Half.
Half a percent. And then that's my amount, so it's like two eighty-eight this year, and then they get that times every.
Years of service.
Years of service.
For years.
For. I think you just get a per month, then I have base pay per year of service. Hundred percent base pay per year.
And I think you could do annual salary instead of.
No, I think all that is there is, I think per month got stuck in there by mistake. It should be, it's a half a percent of the confirmed firefighters' base rate, base pay per year of service.
Instead of per month, per year.
Yeah, but per month it somehow got pasted in there on you.
I think, I think this thing's been wrong.
We're going to wait. We did miss, we missed the per year, but.
That was late, it helps.
So is the physical fitness test not required then?
I'm so.
Cause I'd take one for it.
If you saw what they did, which is all sliding letters, dummy drags and things like that. It's not just, you know, running a mile.
So do they have like a required fitness test if they do or no?
So it's part of their hiring process to complete the physical ability test. Um, but we encourage it through things like this, uh, for continued overall health.
So there is no, that was gonna be my question.
Not a requirement.
So there is no required physical fitness rule?
No.
Is that all like, I don't know, you may have developed like performance management where you could lose your job if you can't complete? They have a choice to take it. But they, if they just can't do their job because they don't want their physically fit, there's no way to?
Um, so we have the ability to make sure they're fit for duty and things like that, which is a different evaluation.
Sure.
And that's based on the job description, not the physical ability test.
And so that would apply to like, um, uh, female firefighter?
The standard is the same, male or female, yeah.
Okay. Who is pregnant?
We have no idea.
I would say there would come a time when they would probably have to take leave.
Yeah, she had a child and she took leave.
I would be more concerned if our male firefighter didn't find a ladder.
Yep. I would entertain a motion.
I would approve the twenty-two-five to twenty-one seven fire department bargaining agreement.
With, with a amendment?
With that correction?
Yep, with per month renewed from the agenda.
I said.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. We have a motion from Commissioner Speaker with a second from Commissioner Robertson. And will, any other comments from the public or the commission, question?
At this time, is that pay scale manageable budget? You know, that just? Not a big deal. Good to know. I mean, the, the unions agree upon it, we approve it, we gotta make it work.
Okay.
Commissioner Robertson?
Page nine, please, section one, article ten, disciplinary. I'd like to read that, read on. Uh, coaching and guiding employees to meet departmental performance and behavioral expectations is a core responsibility of supervisors. Supervisors at all levels should strive to maintain a communication level that helps employees to develop an understanding of what is expected of them in their position. I truly applaud that statement, and I wish if I was going through my working career, I had supervisors who did that. So that's a good, good thing, in my opinion.
Any other questions or comments from the commission or the public? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote.
Okay, we are approving the fire agreement for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Roots?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Citizen request? Citizen request, speaking. Nobody's online anymore. All right, we'll turn the time over to Commissioners and Minutes. We'll start with Commissioner Robertson.
Uh, I just had to comment on two topics we covered today. One was this, um, animal shelter. I was on the air, I'm on the airport board and we heard a request to put something at the airport. We may or may not be able to find room there for, for some kind of animal shelter, but, um, we also encourage, um, maybe I believe it was, um, to talk to the city about, is there any potential, any city property or facility that could work as a better animal shelter? We start there. We heard, um, from our city manager, who's a retired sheriff. Airport manager.
Airport manager.
Uh, who said that he had experienced a lot of need for such a thing as when he was in office, at the sheriff's department. So I think this is, really is an important thing for the community. And the second is, I appreciate Mr. Petranis' comments about citizen safety during parades. Um, I've been in a lot of parades. I've handed out candy. We were scolded, not scolded, instructed, at, uh, a century where we did a lot of parades early on not to throw candy, especially through vehicles. We got to the size, it's really hard to keep up if you walk and hand candy to people because there's so many people and they're moving so fast. So our instructions to our people were, always walk to the curb and throw on the ground at the feet of the people so they would not have it in the street. I don't know if there's a compromised way to do this because walking and handing it out slows it down. But I agree with you that something needs to be done. We, as a community, as a city, certainly should not have our own employees throwing it from vehicles. Thank you.
Um, just a quick check in, Holly, the email that I had from the business owner that was about MDT roadway access or city road access, have you heard anything from MDT?
I have not, but I don't know who does their leasing and what they can lease for. I don't feel like it's a local office decision. I think it might be passed up, so I'll follow up.
Can you follow on that? Thank you. And then as a family, again, that utilizes a lot of our parks and rec departments, the, we very much appreciate, uh, not only the city in helping us maintain great facilities, but all of the groups that come together to help, uh, to help, uh, promote and maintain our facilities as well. So, thanks, Lewis Town. Have the seat cool a lot right now. And then we're on the trail and then we're going up.
Commissioner Root.
Uh, just, uh, one comment. One of my constituents, Ed Durbin, reminded me to remind you, check out your wards and see how many areas have branches hanging down that hit people in the face when they're walking on them. And, uh, after the phone call, I went and got my clippers and took care of my neighbors overhanging branches. They don't, they don't, they're just, they don't live there much, but. Anyway, yeah, check that out because it's not good for visually impaired people. And Ed's always really nice about bringing that up. He just kind, kind of a nice request, so. Help him out and other, other visually impaired people, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Hewitt.
Uh, the only thing is keep killing out your prayers.
I have it right here.
Got the day? Awesome. And then, um, I do have a couple of questions. So I would like to maybe get back into swing with me while that ordinance. Have my ordinance meeting, is that possible?
Yeah, we've got, the snow ordinance that kind of is working on, kind of the next phase, um, will be to draft an ordinance that's ready for a second reading or first reading and then second reading. And then, uh, to update our snow policy so that it aligns with that. So that's kind of snuck in there too, but yes.
And that will include the dog and cat. And if there are way, can we go ahead and like at least get a cop? Like what is that? I've not ever seen the ordinance for the fair, the parades. So I'd love to see something happen before the actual Lewis Town Days parade. Would that change, is that possible?
Just stop, it would not be possible for a change to an ordinance, um, within sixty days. I mean, that's how long an ordinance change take. Um, we can just pull that ordinance out and email it out to you, um, so you can see what it says. I don't know if the penalty thrown there. So I've got.
Is it possible to do some communication with the fairgrounds to make sure that they're educating those that are in law? Cause I know that the Lewis Town Days parade, they do more than just candy, like.
We'll get.
They give a lot of.
As I said on the fair board? I will get the word out. We'll do some education.
Thank you.
Great parade. I wanted to comment on the candy as well, just because I saw that gentleman get hurt like right in front of us. And I don't know, if you don't need to pick my minutes, but your girls were so stingy to me, I'm not going to try.
The highlight of the parade.
They love that.
Beautiful, beautiful Fourth of July. Um, and that's really all I have, so you'll go ahead and move close on me for the evening picture.